Welcome to the Board of Education's December 7, 2023 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the pledge led by Ms. Christie.
Face the flag. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unfortunately, Mr. McMillan is absent tonight due to illness, so please keep him in your thoughts and prayers this evening. Thank you to everyone who is in attendance tonight. I just want to remind you that this is the board's public business meeting to discuss items that come before us for consideration. We would ask that you be respectful and courteous at all times, and also please be mindful that sound carries very easily in this room. So if you need to speak to your neighbor or take a phone call, please step outside of the room to do so. Lastly, Knox County Schools will be closed for winter break from Thursday, December 21st through Tuesday, January 2nd. Teachers will report back to the spring semester on January 3rd, and students will return to the classroom on January 4th. On behalf of the entire board, I wish all of our students, families, and staff a restful, well-deserved break and an opportunity to spend lots of time with family and friends. And I know some of us look very festive this evening. Mr. Dupler, love your Christmas suit. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ryswick. He's going to introduce Chelsea Price to everybody.
All right. Thanks so much, Ms. Henderson, members of the board. I'm actually going to let Mr. Myers do that, but we are glad. I know he mentioned it on Monday, and I'll have him introduce her. She's officially here.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick, Ms. Henderson. Yes, as we announced on Monday, we made a hire for the Student Success Advisory and Improvement Officer, and it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Chelsea Price. She's already been a great asset to the division, and I'm really happy to have her on board.
Everybody, I'm Chelsea Price. I am a licensed attorney, and I was just brought on a couple weeks ago by Knox County Schools. I just want to let you all know how excited I am to be here, and I am so excited to support the district and its goal of promoting success for every student. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price, for your welcome. We're excited to have you. Welcome to Knox County Schools. We have several changes to the agenda, so just bear with me for just a little bit. Following our work session on Monday night, slight changes were made to the revised version of Policy I-420 being considered as Item 6C, and also Policy J-152 being considered as Item 6J. As Mr. Watson noted, Policy I-420 was missing the word "to" on Page 2. T-O, clarify that. Line 22, and that has been corrected. And as Ms. Owen requested, the words "wish to" were removed from Page 1, Line 45 of Policy J-152. Also, as Superintendent Ryswick shared through his email on Tuesday, the documentation for Emerald Academy's evaluation report was updated slightly on Pages 9 through 11 to include those fiscal notes from Mr. McPherson talked about at the work session on Monday night. Additionally, you received an email today, but I also want to share publicly that a revised version of the Charter School Agreement with Knox Preparatory School being considered as Item 9C is attached to the agenda. The revisions that you see have been agreed to by Knox Prep and their The revisions that you see have been agreed to by Knox Prep and their legal counsel. Is that correct, Mr. Dupler?
Yes, Madam Chair, that is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any other requested changes to the agenda? Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Mr. Watson. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Coteen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 5, Consent Agenda. Second.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6A, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-170, extracurricular activities as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6B, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-370, graduation requirements as amended.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6C, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-420, controversial issues as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6D, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-120, attendance as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6E, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-122, compulsory attendance ages as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6F, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-130, home schools as amended.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Mr. Triplet. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6G, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-140, homeless students as amended.
Motion by Mr. Watson, second by Ms. Owen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6H, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-150, school admissions as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Reverend Butler. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6I, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-151, student assignment as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6J, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-152, student transfers within the system as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6K, approved second reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy J-153, sibling priority admission.
A motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6L, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-154, out-of-district student transfer to the regional STEM academy as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Mr. Watson. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6M, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-170, release during school hours as amended.
A motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6N, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-180, rights and responsibilities as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6O, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-181, procedural due process as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Do we have any discussion? No? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6P, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-190, code of behavior and discipline as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6Q, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-193, student suspension as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6R, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-194, zero tolerance offenses as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6S, approved change of term guardian to legal guardian in Sections A through J of the Knox County Board of Education Policy Manual waiving second reading required by Board Policy B-200.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7A, approved Tennessee Department of Education Special Education Preschool Grant in the amount of $1,256,814.96.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7B, approved Tennessee Department of Education Summer Literacy Training Stipend Grant in the amount of $171,000.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Mr. Watson. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7C, approved Tennessee Department of Education Title III Immigrant Grant in the amount of $46,348.80.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by, was it you, Ms. Horn? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7D, approved grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Education for Occupational Scholarship Program Grant Funds to allow the Knox County Schools Educator Preparation Program to reimburse scholarship recipients tuition and mandatory fees.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7E, approved donation in the amount of $32,300 from Rusty Wallace Automotive Group designated to the Austin East Magnet High School Band Program.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7F, approved donation in the amount of $30,000 from Philip Lawson designated to the Austin East Magnet High School Football Program.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7G, approved Nishwongra Foundation AP Access for All Mini Grant in the total amount of $499.42 for Central High School.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Reverend Butler. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7H, approved Science Education Research Foundation Grant in the amount of $500 for Southdole Middle School.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Reverend Butler. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7I, approved Tennessee Foundation for Agriculture in the Classroom Grant in the amount of $500 for Southdole Middle School.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Ms. Horn. Heard echoing seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8A, approved contract with Gallagher &amp; Associates Incorporated for provision of wireless clock systems for up to $100,000 annually for the term of December 1, 2023 through November 30th, 2024, which may be extended for four additional years.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Watson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8B, approved contract with Stukesberry Construction Incorporated for provision of excavation services for up to $100,000 annually for the term of December 1, 2023 through November 30th, 2024, which may be extended for four additional years.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Horn. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, approve an increase to construction contract with King Construction Group Incorporated up to $350,000 for construction at Lincoln Park Center for the Newcomer Center.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approve an increase to construction contract with Merritt Construction Incorporated up to $40,000 for work in excess of original project at Adrian Burnett Elementary School.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8E, approve memorandum of understanding with Knox County, Tennessee, Associated Builders and Contractors, Greater Tennessee, and Tennessee College of Applied Technology Knoxville to define a partnership for the shared use of the Skilled Trade Academy and Regional Training Center.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9A, approve Emerald Academy Charter School Evaluation Report.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I'm sorry, was there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9... So sorry, Ms. Henderson. 9B, approve charter school application review team appointments.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Horn. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C, approve charter school agreement with Knoxville Preparatory School.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Horn. Do we have any discussion? Bike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to Gary for, I had a couple of requests for changes, and I'm glad that they accepted the change to 90 business days for giving us notice whether they're moving or not, or if that were to happen. One thing I do want to bring up that they were not in agreeance with, that maybe Mr. Myers could provide some clarity, going back to Section 2.33, cost for special education, where we were talking about where in that process that they assume responsibility, and this, the last line of the first paragraph says, "The charter schools' financial obligation begins once a student has an IEP." And it seemed kind of like in the conversation on Monday that their responsibility is, and financial responsibility is before that, so I had requested that the potential change would be the charter school's financial obligation begins once a student has been suspected of needing student supports and/or special education interventions, and they were not in agreement to this change. Mr. Myers, could you speak again to kind of like what that process is, like when they, when they're suspected, like what they will have to pay for? I think maybe I didn't understand, like where the charter school's financial obligation really does start.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Bike, for the question. So, Mr. Dupler and I actually talked about this subsection of the contract, and it is specific to special education. So, I think to help clear some of this up, so, once a student is suspected of having an educational disability, that student and family then have the protections afforded to them under those procedural rights and safeguards. That's very different than actually receiving the special education services, right? So, the costs that would be encumbered based on a particular special education service doesn't actually start until the child is identified as having that educational disability. So, that is, I think, why that language is that way, and Mr. Dupler can, if I haven't done a good job explaining that, Mr. Dupler can weigh in. But it's my understanding, based on the way this subsection is designed, that what they're, basically what they're saying is, once we have identified that the student does, in fact, qualify for special education services, then the charter school would be responsible for the financial obligation to deliver those services.
This specifically says IEP, so I was a little confused on if students have 504s. Is there a cost when students have 504s to the district?
So, if a charter school student has a 504 plan, there would be no specific cost associated with that to the district. So, Section 504 of the ADA does not have a funding element, which is a pretty significant difference between that and the IDEA, which is, of course, federally funded. So, we don't get funding for students.
So, there aren't supports that, under a 504, that would have any sort of cost?
Not to the Knox County Schools, outside of what the ramifications might be under TISA, which is not my world. But, no, there's no specific, there would be no specific cost to our district to help them implement a 504 plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? And just for a point of clarification, since Ms. Christie made the motion on this, Ms. Christie, will you clarify which version you're moving to approve? The 11-3 version and the 12-6 revised versions are attached. So, I assume you mean the 12-6 version. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for everybody. So, if we do not have any more discussion on this item, Ms. Coteen, will you do a roll call vote, please? Thank you.
Dr. Butler? Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Bike?
Pass.
Ms. Horn? Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Christie? Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Butler, would you like to change your pass vote? Ms. Bike, would you like to change yours? Madam Chair, that's five yes votes, one no vote, and two pass.
So, motion carries. Thank you. We will now move on to public forum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Holland, if you will state your name, county of residence, and then you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Janaya Holland. And you said state what?
Yeah, name, county of residence, I'm sorry.
Knox County, 37921. Hi, everyone. My name is Janaya Holland. I'm sure some of you might know my name. You've seen my email. You've seen the news article this morning. So, I'm here today... seen my email. You've seen the news article this morning. So, I'm here today to discuss the incident that happened at West Haven Elementary, where my four-year-old child was placed in a storage closet for breaking pencils and crayons. Don't know who's aware of it. Haven't heard from anyone when I sent the message out to majority of these people sitting up here today. Since then, we have put a behavior plan in place for him to be positive reinforcements, and he was also placed in a pack room Friday. I have now had to withdraw my son and get him evaluated by Helen Ross McNabb, as he is traumatized. Nobody can give me answers. Nobody can tell me why he was placed in there, other than breaking pencils. Nobody has documentation. Nobody can tell me how many times he has been placed in there. I reached out to multiple people. Your assistant superintendent reached out to me. Student Success Chos has not reached out to me. I didn't need anyone to contact Wimbeff Flackey, because I had already contacted her. She has said in the meeting, nothing has been done, but she has said in the meeting. Also, so, I received a functional behavior assessment that stated my son was not going to get a behavior plan because his actions were attention-seeking. At the parent liaison called West Haven Elementary, they emailed me a behavior draft a few hours before our meeting. When I asked what change, she told me it was a typo. I have one minute left. I'm going to leave there if anyone has any questions for me.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. Stacy Reese? If you'll state your name, county of residence, and then you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Stacy Reese. I live in District 7 of Knox County, and I teach in District 4. I was quite shocked during last month's public forum, when I heard a member of Moms for Liberty claim to have spoken with a, quote, "very supportive" board member, as this group has been labeled an extremist group by the Southern Poverty Law Center and has consistently vilified and maligned educators in public education nationwide. I would ask if they have children in public schools, because I'm perplexed as to why people whose children haven't been in public schools want to influence policy and have oversight of them. Complaints based on passages read out of context ignore the literary value of a book as a whole, and only support the importance of reading more and not less. On Common Sense Media, one parent reviewed The Perks of Being a Wallflower, the book in question from last month, as, quote, "One of the best books I've ever read. It taught me a lot of important things about life and has a lot of beautiful quotes. My favorite is, 'We accept the love that we deserve.'" Another parent wrote, "This book identifies with teenagers because it is relevant to what kids face today. It does not compromise the reader's judgment. Instead, it instills a sense of self based on choice." Flagging books with mature content to avoid controversy may be well-intentioned. However, red flags don't provide any meaningful information about a book's literary or educational value. Rather than evaluating the work as a whole, a red flag reduces complex literary works to a few isolated and, quote, "objectionable" elements. In 1982, the United States Supreme Court in the Island Trees District, School District versus Pico case decided that local school boards may not remove books from school library shelves simply because they dislike the ideas contained in those books. Teachers and librarians are college-educated professionals who are trained to select materials for their educational value. The people I work with are compassionate, knowledgeable, professional, and ethical. You wouldn't have hired us if we weren't. I'm also the parent of a little boy who will attend Knox County Schools, and I believe that I absolutely have liberty to weigh in on things pertaining to my own child. That's where my influence ends. I would never have the audacity to try to influence others to make unilateral decisions for all children based on my beliefs and value system. The majority of our community does not share the views of those who spoke here last month, and no one, no one group has any right to impose their views on others or demand that an educational program reflect their personal preferences. Content-based objections that lead to the complete removal or restricted access to the offending material for all students hold the views of one person who disfavors the book above the views of others. Our website says Knox County is blessed with incredible educators. Trust us to be that. I encourage you all to visit any classroom and see the hard work that KCS's phenomenal educators do every day to help students grow academically as well as socially. Any of you are welcome to my classroom at any time. Thank you."
Thank you. Paula Hancock, if you will state your name and county of residence. I think we know who you are, but you'll have three minutes.
Paula Hancock, Knox County. I'm here today, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Ryswick. As the semester draws to a close, I'm here today to extend our appreciation for a successful fall semester, and like you, we are all ready for a holiday break. Our students have worked hard, and so have your educators. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the members on the special question committee and our elections facilitator, Dr. Rodney E. Russell, for a successful polling, where 60% of Knox County's eligible voters voted yes to continue in collaborative conferencing, awarding all seats to the Knox County Education Association. On behalf of all of our educators, we want to tell you how much we appreciate the support of the board and the community as we close out this semester. All of us are looking forward to an excellent second semester and the hope the new year brings. As you are aware, the Tennessee General Assembly will convene in Nashville on January 9, 2024. We all know that they will consider multiple pieces of legislation that will directly impact our students, our educators, and our district. As duly elected members of this school board, you can speak with our state senators and representatives about issues that have an impact on our schools. No one understands the needs of our students better than those of us here in the district, for no one is vested as much as we are. As we are sure you are, we are incredibly supportive of public education and strongly oppose anything that would reduce the efficacy of educating all Tennessee students, especially removing much-needed funding. Please note that the Knox County Education Association is a willing partner in advocating for strong public education resources for our students and educators. At any time, we are happy to discuss with you how considered legislation in Nashville will realistically and directly impact our school district. The Knox County Education Association wishes you a joyous holiday season. May the positive spirit we feel right now continue throughout the new year and the upcoming legislative session, as we work cooperatively toward our shared priority of making our community the best place in which to live, teach, and learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. And with that, we are adjourned.